Okay, at six thirty, let's go ahead and get started, call the meeting to order. If you do the roll call, please.
Megan, Brian, Brooks.
Here.
Rob, Alyssa, Michael.
Here.
Barb.
Here. Okay, have you had a chance to look at the agenda, any changes to the agenda? I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda, Toots second.
Got a motion and second to approve the agenda, all in favor? Opposed? All right, consent calendar. Got some plaits, need a motion on those, please?
No motion to approve.
Basset, I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the consent calendar, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, minutes. Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the minutes, all in favor? Opposed? All right. Um, down to public comments, if anyone is here that would like to address the commission before we get to the items on the agenda? Anybody here? All right, we're gonna go to the rezone for River Park addition.
So, River Park's looking to change up, you just looked at the plat as part of the consent calendar, now they are looking to rezone the land newly created from what it was into institutional, my understanding is that goes through a drainage way. Drainage ways are complicated, that's just all going to be drainage way, so they had to redesign it, that's why they are replatted it and now are looking to make it institutional. Upcoming will be, we are, we already had zoning there, so there'll probably be some conditional use permits to extend zoning from a lot to another based on how they've replanted. But, right now, that's what they're looking to do, to make these sections institutional.
And it's, it's all drainage?
Yes.
All of it's drainage except for tract seventeen that you see on that minor plat.
Toots, I move to approve the rezone.
I'd bring second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the rezone, any discussion on it? This is to recom- yeah, recommend the rezone?
Correct.
Right? Okay. Uh, okay, then, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. Then we are going to adjourn, or I guess adjourn, planning and zoning, and call to order board of adjustment. Roll call is the same, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Toots, so moved.
Basset, second.
Okay, we got a motion and second to approve the agenda of board of adjustment, all in favor? Opposed? All right, so our new business is a variance application for Locust Avenue. Come on, come on up.
For the record, I'll have to excuse myself from voting in the conversation.
Okay, um, so if you would just state your name and address, please, and then tell us what's going on.
Technology Fund. Uh, my name is James Lynn, my wife and I reside at one five zero four South Locust Avenue. Members of the Planning and Zoning Committee, I appreciate your time and give, and the chance to address you this evening. Uh, my wife and I are respectfully requesting a variance to allow the construction of a three season porch on our existing deck, located at fifteen oh four South Locust, which encroaches upon the rear yard setback. I would like to outline the unique and unintentional hardships associated with this request and explain why strict enforcement of zoning ordinance in this case would result in practical difficulty and a hardship. Uh, I do have copies of, uh, the survey, I do see them on the screen, I'm assuming you can see them on your computer, but if you'd like copies, I have copies. Uh, it, uh, as we discovered through the permitting process, when our home was built in two thousand and four, a site plan was submitted to the city at that time for approval. The site plan is originally submitted and approved by the city indicated compliance with all majors, all, all setback requirements. However, during construction, the home was built in a mirror image. My garage, which was designed to be on the right, is actually on the left. So, I bought it as a spec home, I wasn't involved in the construction process. The mirrored construction was inspected and approved by the city upon completion. Importantly, no modifications have been made to the home's footprint since the original construction. The city approved site plan on file does not reflect the mirrored layout that was ultimately constructed, at least it didn't at the permitting time. When we went to look at the, uh, site plan, it was actually still the original site plan that was submitted. As a result, the current placement of the deck, which was built as part of the original construction, is slight, extends slightly into the rear yard setback. Approximately one to two feet at the northwest corner and two to three feet at the northeast corner, depending on where you're measuring, 'cause he, as you can see, our back lot line is not exactly straight, and I did not survey it. This discrepancy is not due to any way or action or negligence on our part, but is a result of a historical error in the site orientation that was nevertheless approved in pass through city, uh, through inspection by city officials at the time of the construction. The proposed three season porch would be constructed directly on the existing deck structure, there will be no expansion of the current footprint. The dimensions of the deck and thus the proposed porch remain as were originally constructed and approved by the city in two thousand and four, completed in two thousand and five, notwithstanding the mirrored orientation. This request merely seeks to enclose an existing space, not to increase the degree of nonconformity. We have looked at alternate locations on our lot that would actually meet the requirements of the setback. While there are technically two other possible locations on the property where a three season porch could be constructed, both present significant insurmountable challenges. Option one, originally intended location based on the site plan. Uh, this would approximate, this approximate location corresponds where the deck was intended per the original non-mirrored site plan. Construction, constructing the porch in this area would require substantial and costly modifications to the home's existing floor plan, including reconfiguring the living space. Additionally, it would encroach on two legally required egress windows, which is a direct, uh, direct violation of building and fire safety codes. Option two, off the garage. Uh, the garage is situated at the ground level, unlike the rest of the home, and this portion of the lot functions as primary drainage for not only my backyard, but four of my neighbors as well as where the lower part of it, of the, uh, addition there. Constructing a porch in this location, we can obstruct critical drainage flow and likely cause water retention or flooding on my property during seasonal runoff. Any development in this area would require significant alterations to the existing drainage plan, which could result in environmental impact and unintended consequences for adjacent homes. There is minimal impact on surrounding properties because the pro- proposed porch will be built on the existing structure with no increase in size. The impact on adjacent neighbors will be minimal, the proposed structure is compatible with the character of the neighborhood and maintains the intent of the zoning code in terms of appearance, use, and density. In fact, enclosing the space will likely result in a more aesthetically pleasing and well-maintained property. Uh, there are no, there's, uh, unintentional nonconformity and practical difficulty, we understand that. The unique combination of the mirrored site plan, city approved inspections, and lack of any post-construction modification places in an unusual and unintentional, unintentional position of nonconformity. Denying this variance would effectively penalize us for a layout decision made during initial construction or approved by the city staff, rather than any subsequent, subsequent action. In conclusion, in light of these facts, I respect, respectfully request that the committee consider the reasonable and limited nature of this variance, granting this request would not increase the nonconforming footprint, would avoid significant disruption to the home's layout or surrounding properties, would remedy an unintended hardship created by a construction oversight that was approved by the city and would allow for the reasonable use of our property in a manner consistent with the neighborhood. Uh, pending your questions, I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
The current deck doesn't have a roof on it, does it?
The current deck does not have a roof on it.
Is there anyone here to speak with this issue? You're not here to, you are? Okay. If you just state your name and address, please.
My name's Matthew Saken, and I reside at fifteen oh six South Parkview Boulevard. I'm directly adjacent to them to the west. Uh, my, the only thing that separates us is a chain link fence. I think that they should be able to do this, I think that it would be a great addition to their house. They've lived here for, you know, this house has been there for over twenty years, and through no fault of their own, they want to improve their house, make it look better, and I personally wouldn't have any issue with it, there's nothing that would change my lifestyle, would change my view. Had it been the correct site plan, you know, he probably wouldn't have even been here, so I would lobby that you guys approve it just because it's through no fault of his home, he wants to improve his property and the place he lives in, and I think that's a great thing to do, and I can kind of understand where he's from, 'cause when I went through and did some zoning for my house for putting in a fence and redoing a deck, I realized that my house was set back six feet too far back, which didn't affect me at that time, but it's, again, it's just circumstances that we can't control, and so, I thank you for your time, but I would, I would, uh, kindly ask you guys to approve it for them.
Have you looked at leaving it a little bit narrower where the current deck is and then bringing that over to the west side there and making a little bit bigger sun deck on the, on the side?
Right now, the way it sits is, uh, we could make it narrow, we, we have replaced the deck, uh, so we do have some significant value into the deck as we replaced it with a composite deck, and I understand that's a, a cost that I said to myself. I guess to put it bluntly, as my wife said, we wouldn't have a three season porch, we'd have a catio. It would turn into a cat room because of the size, uh, really not conforming for, to, for some living space for furniture and some of those things.
Well, you could make it, you know, the size that you want on the, on more of the side of the house, not directly off of the garage, but, you know, so you go on the deck over to the porch.
Uh, if we were to go to the east, we, we do not have that much room between there and the egress windows the way they sit right now. To the west, if we went to the west, um, there, there is a significant drop there, would change a lot of the landscaping, it could still affect the drainage in that area because of the swell that the landscaper did. When we did have drainage problems, it's actually built to go underneath the deck the way it sits now, and actually has landscaping stones that help support the deck. When I say stones, lar- large boulders, uh, to maintain the flow, 'cause as I said, we've got four yards that actually drain through our yard and come to the west side of our garage. Could it be done? I'm not a builder, I'm not an architect, I don't pretend to be one, uh, it potentially could be done, but, uh, it would be, it would mean tearing out the existing structure right now to actually modify that. Uh, when we had the deck rebuilt, we did do, um, substant- some substantial work to have better footings put in because our view was to improve it in the future, never understanding that we would ever run into anything like this because it was based on the existing structure.
Correct, is that why, instead of, like, I know the deck is encroaching as well, it always has been since it's been built. My question is, I understand why we have setbacks, I get that, but we're allowed to put a shed five feet off of the property line? Which, just, to me, that should almost be back twenty-five feet. 'Cause if we're, we're, that, we're saying we're able to build into that setback with a shed. 'Cause you can go ten feet high with a shed, I'm just saying, I mean, I'm going, I don't know what the difference is between this going back, just keeping it where it is with the deck, and then if he, 'cause he could throw a shed up back there and be five foot off the setback. And it could still be just as big as this is.
A lot of that has, I think, you look at it with privacy, you're not living in a shed where you're sitting up there.
Uh, some do, or some, she sheds, and they have TVs in them, 'cause my neighbor has a TV in theirs.
But you're not, and it's right off five foot.
Ten feet high in there, in the shed, you're in the shed, I mean, you could. Why, this deck, this deck is not that high off the ground, I see two steps going up to it, so you're talking sixteen inches, maybe twenty. But, I'm just saying, I don't.
That's where I, I would look at it, with the deck being different than a shed, that's why I.
Well, our, our deck regulations in Brandon are tougher than most cities, I do know that. 'Cause we can be fifteen feet in Sioux Falls from the back's property line, and we're twenty-five.
With a roof?
Deck.
Well, with a roof, deck?
Just, a deck has to be twenty-five here, in fit, Sioux Falls, you can be fifteen, I'm just saying, just a deck in general, I'm talking deck right now. So we're ten extra feet away from the property line in our city compared to Sioux Falls, as their setback is. I just, if, if we would have a fifteen foot setback for a deck, this would be okay, as the city of Sioux Falls regulation would be for a setback.
Does Sioux Falls look at it differently when, once you put a roof on it?
I do not, I do not know that.
Do you look at, yeah, a roof as a different, as part of the structure?
Well, it's even different as a building permitted, uh, how it's permitted to, if it's got a roof on it or not, 'cause we had that discussion here a month ago about a four season room compared to a deck, if it's.
So, how far off the ground is the deck?
It's a split level home, and when I say my, my garage is at ground level, my garage is literally ground level, going in the front of my house or the back of my house, it's two steps. So, none of my basement windows protrude above ground level. Um, so it's not, I wouldn't call it garden level, uh, every one of the windows, so it's literally, what's the height that you have to have a railing on a deck? And I think I am just exceeding that, that I have to have a guard rail, so I mean, it's, it's barely off the ground.
So, but it comes out of your kitchen?
It would come out of our, yes, our kitchen and dining area, yes.
Yeah, the dining area.
Yes. It's a natural flow from the house, it would actually, yeah.
And you said you rebuilt it at some point?
Yes, we did replace it because it was almost twenty years old when we had it replaced, because the wood was rotting out on the deck.
What year that was?
Yeah, this year.
Oh.
Yeah, when we did the permitting for this, we were approved to replace the deck, and then phase two would be to get the approval for this. So when we went to do, replace the deck, we did go with the increased footings, in case we were approved, and we went with a composite deck to make sure that we had the strength as well, and to make it easier to insulate. 'Cause this will be an insulated space, it will be an enclosed space, but it will not have forced air or forced heat. It'll be a separate three season porch off of the home, so there'll be no load or anything put to the heating and cooling system. It's more of a privacy space because our lots are tight in that neighborhood.
Does the city have any ideas of modifications that could be made to make this work? That you haven't discussed with, uh, Captain? Would it assist you in your thought process if we worked through the checklist? Sure.
So, nine B, the request is contrary to the public interest, yes or no? Nine B. The request is contrary to the public interest. Yes or no? Well, what happens is, sometimes, when we look at these, we're answering about this one particular lot, but a lot of times that sets a precedent, so we're thinking about now also, at the same time, the entire town. So, and if the entire town had this, would that be within the public interest? Of course, we're, we just have to vote on this one, but a lot of times, you know, the precedence starts, starts more, more requests, so we always have to keep that in mind.
So Paul, what checklist are we looking at, is it the, it's the one?
Yeah, the variance checklist that we get typed up officially, if you want to make a comment. So, you know, this has been looked at by the city attorney, and this is the, the items that we have to address, it's in the yellow.
Yep.
The board gives redirection, I'll put it down there, and they can type up in a minute. The second one is number C, the unnecessary hardship that exists if the variance is granted is, and I think generally the board has to present one. If no hardship exists, it generally fails.
And just for clarification, in the code, the hardship is something related to topography, the land itself, it's not financial or I want it, it's the prop- yes, it's the property, so.
And, and doesn't it's, one other say, one other part of it says, um, the hardship can't be caused by your own self?
Yes, and I can read that language if you would like.
Number C.
So, the language of C says, "An unnecessary hardship refers solely to the particular physical condition of the property, not any personal or self-inflicted hardship to its owner, financial or otherwise. The hardship must be substantial and of compelling force, not merely for reasons of convenience or profit, and must render the ability to use the land unfeasible without the variance."
Now, in this case, from what you've told us, the fact that it got built in a mirror image might be a hardship. It would be one thing we might consider as a hardship, but I don't know how you guys feel.
The, the issue I'm having is if, if you came here and said you wanted to take your deck off and put an addition on in that space, that would be, that'd be a hard thing to, to look at, you know, if you wanted to add a room there or something. And I know that that's not the perspective maybe you're looking at it, but that's kind of what you're doing by the time you put a roof on and all these things. I understand the, if, if you were just replacing the deck, and you're outside of the setbacks and you want to replace what was already there, we've already said you can do that, so, but to go further, put a roof on it and all these things, that's a step further, and I I'm not sure that going into the setback with an enclosed structure is, would, this situation would meet that hardship?
And, and through the years, we have discussed the fact that we have a potential addition in that space, because it makes sense, we wanted to actually grow the size of our kitchen and our dining space, 'cause it's undersized, and that's one of the reasons we had avoided it, was the fact that it would take pilings and footings, uh, and potentially crawl space, actually cementing it into the ground where this is gonna be attached to the house, is, is not affixed to the house, it'll save, have the same siding, it'll have the same windows, but it is not a, uh, it could not be a legal bedroom, uh, it couldn't be some of those things because it's actually still off the ground to allow for the drainage, uh, and it would still not, uh, have a fixed foundation to it, so.
So when I think of a three, four season room, I think of basically a screened in porch. But you're thinking like siding with windows, so it would look like part of the house from the outside?
It would actually look like part of the house, and it would actually be, uh, it'll have vinyl windows, so it'll have more than just screens, so it can be closed, closed off and actually be used without heat for the majority of the year. But as I said, it will not have forced air or forced heat, so it does not include our living space. It's actually more of a, it, it, it's, it's still gonna be a deck, it just happens to be enclosed.
So I'm, now this is just because I'm curious, so on the inside then, if it's not heated, it's not just open, right, it's just, what sliding doors from the dining area?
Uh, it's a French door from the dining area, it would actually, uh, and it would actually be a storm door outside, so not a fixed entry door. It wouldn't be a solid door, it'd actually be, very honestly, an easy space to break into, uh, to get to that point, but not to be able to get into my home. So. But it will be insulated from the bottom, from the top, and from the sides, to make sure that we can maintain the, uh, the, uh, just ma- maintain the materials in there so they don't, don't rot away like a typical screen porch.
So you can go in there in the winter, even though it's not heated?
Right.
Make sure it's really insulated well?
Right, it would actually, we'd probably put an electric fireplace in there, one that, that's a TV stand is probably what we would do, so. We actually did this in our other home in Brandon, so, I mean, it's been on her wish list since, since we moved in. And same thing, we actually just took the deck and actually turned it into a three season por- or actually a screen porch and then finished it off. So never saw, thought we'd have any issues with existing structure the way it sits. And that one, believe it or not, was about ten feet off the ground, 'cause that one's got storage enclosed underneath it, so, yeah. And this would have none of that.
So these cases are always a real challenge for the commission, and, um, the checklist that Paul was reading off, we have to be able to document why the variance is granted, and if we can't come up with, uh, some reasons, then we have to deny it. Um, and so, the struggle here is, it makes perfect sense, probably to all of us, but when we open these things up, then we do set the precedent, so that's what they're mulling over. I do not vote, so I'm just trying here to run the meeting. Does somebody else have some more questions? Does somebody else have some more questions for our applicant?
All right, I wonder how he got a building permit to redo the porch, or not porch, but the deck in the first place, if it was out of compliance?
So we do allow the replacement of certain non-conforming structures, so long as you don't expand them. Especially those that, not repairing them would be safety issues, like a deck. And that's one thing we have talked about, it hasn't gone to effect yet because I don't believe we've held the public hearing, but there's an exception. Currently, if you wanted to replace a non-conforming structure, the rule is you can't remove more than 50% of the time, but you could repair it. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense with a deck, because you're not going to take off 49%, then 49%, then 2%. You're going to do it at once, just so it structurally sounds. So we are working through an amendment that has been discussed by you all as the Planning and Zoning Commission to have that exception to the non-conforming uses. But, so that's the process, he has come in and he has gotten those permits to replace the deck through that multi-legged process.
Okay, and so I, did I hear you say that that, or do I understand you correctly? You said that is a process the city allows as long as it's just replacing the thing that already is there and not necessarily adding to it or making improvements to it?
Correct. You're not allowed to make the non-conformance more, but if you replace it, and we understand deck safety, we don't want a bunch of broken down decks and someone stepping on them and having issues.
The two interesting parks, parts with the deck is, is one, nobody knew it was out of compliance till until we went to actually change the type of the structure. And I did state in here that we have not increased the size of the deck since we, since we purchased the home. We did decrease the size of the setback since we purchased the home because it originally came fully wrapped with three stairs protruding out with the railings and everything else. And we pulled it back to floating stairs to make it work better with the patio that we put in. So actually, our setback is probably decreased by about a foot and a half compared to what it was before when we purchased the home.
The challenge that I'm having is that we have, this lot is not the only lot that has a deck that's out of performance. It's not the only thing that was built differently than the plans showed, you know. And so if we allowed the change in the structure, we would have just opened up a can of worms because there are so many people that would want to do something different that's outside of the setbacks that they thought that they could do when they bought the house. So I, I don't, I'm not saying it's a bad plan, I think it's a fine plan, I just, it's not a unique plan. And I, I, I just don't see how we could approve this without having 50 more properties that want to do the same thing. And once you put a roof on it, that is a different structure. We, I wouldn't, if you came in here and wanted to put an addition on the back of your house and into the setbacks, I would kind of look at it the same way, unfortunately. That's why I'm leaving. How do we view a pergola? How do we view a pergola?
We, we get permits for them and they're part of the setback. Most of them are linked in a tight end to the roof line of, of the house to some degree, so they'll be part of the setback. Is that an answer to your question?
A pergola? I just want to make sure I quote the language correct, is why I'm taking a minute. So the language at issue is the open, unenclosed and uncovered language. So adding a covering would create the problem. If you enclosed it for some reason and didn't put a roof on it, it would cause a problem. In order to go into the setback, the, if it was not 12 inches height above grade, it could project into a required yard, a rear aside, distance at least five feet from the adjacent side of rear lot line. So if, if it was just a patio 12 inches and below, it'd be different. But if you, when you add stuff to it or it's taller than that, that's where the setbacks become an issue. And whether this is an item we want to readdress in the future as Planning and Zoning Commission, what the rules actually are, let me know and we can certainly revisit. So you're saying if a pergola's sitting on the ground, it can be five foot away from the setback then? If it's sitting 12 inches below, or at least 12 inches below, not ground, but not 12 inches higher than ground?
I imagine you would consider the covering to be in violation of the full enclos- And, and the post, the post away from the house would be above at 12 inches. And we allow a deck, it's just a covered deck 12 inches below, but not the post and the covering.
And whether that needs to be modified, we consider the entertainment enough?
So what I'm hearing is that we're struggling to find what the hardship is. Is that what I'm hearing? That we have to justify the hardship? On the form. Does anyone have an idea of, of what we could use for the hardship? It's typi- it's typically topography.
I'm, I'm kind of in the place where Melissa is, where I think the best option of hardship that I can think of is the fact that it was built differently originally than the original site plan. I just think that the, I, I do think that the, this being enclosed and roof just is the difficult part for me because it becomes much more like the rest of the house and the structure. And I, I just, I have struggled with that part of it because that's, that's a really different structure than the deck. And I'm glad that the ability to redo the deck as it sits was there and that's, we've talked about that. Um, I, I do have a real struggle with it being a roof over it and, and having, having it enclosed this way because I just think that's a whole different structure.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it's not a deck anymore, now it's a room. A room is different than a deck. Do we have any interest in looking at, as Rob was talking about Sioux Falls regulations that have a smaller setback? Let's, let's pretend that we do for, just, just to let you know, if, let's say we thought to ourselves, oh, that, that sounds like a good idea. That would take at least three months to finalize before it would go into effect. Yeah. But I don't know even if you, if the other people on the commission have any interest in even looking at that or talking about it.
Well, to be honest on that thought, I mean, if, if the City of Sioux Falls has something different, even if it was different on a deck that was roofed and enclosed by walls, I'm not sure I would agree. Because if that extends in the setback, that's a, that's a structure much like the house. Whereas a deck only, especially an uncovered deck, I could view differently, but I just, that's the sticking point for me is the roofing over the top. I mean, I think there could be a discussion about a pergola, but because that's a little different, it's generally open. But I just, I'm sticking on the roofed and enclosed part of this.
Since I have the experts in the room and I'm looking for alternatives on where to go for space right now, um, if I understand the setback for a shed is five feet, is that correct from a back lot line? And, and does that have to be flush with the ground or can that be raised?
The setback for accessory buildings is five feet from the property lines?
Yes, yes.
The, the rear and the side.
Right, and it can't exceed a height of 10 feet?
Sidewall height of 10 feet.
Sidewall.
The sidewalls, so if you had, if, if you go down main and you take a turn over towards the Public Works Building, you'll notice a garage going up that more looks like a barn. We, so we measured the sidewalls, not necessarily, it could be a box, or it could be a, you could have a big point, but we just measured the sidewalls.
I, I'm just thinking of a future permit request here, so it would be legal for me to build a shed between my existing deck and the back lot line as long as it's not 10 feet, more than 10 feet high on the sidewalls and meets a five-foot setback if I wanted to put a room. Let me rephrase that, a shed.
And it would have to be 10 feet from your principal building?
10 feet, and my deck is currently 12 feet deep, so it would be 10 feet from, it would be 12 feet from the principal building since the deck is not considered part of the structure.
It, it's from the deck too.
From the deck to. Okay, so I couldn't tie, you can't tie a deck and a shed, you can't tie a house and a shed together with a deck? I'm, I'm not arguing, I'm, I'm literally asking a que-
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative by any means, I'm just looking for alternatives since I have the experts and there's, I don't think there's anybody on the agenda after me, so.
Yeah, a detached accessory structure in the zoning codes are looked at completely different than the main home, so. This is a whole separate set of rules.
I know I can come knock on your door, Paul, so. I, as I had the thought in my head, I wanted, I wanted to verbalize it to make sure I was making sense.
Yeah, you're always welcome, eight to five Monday through Friday. If you come talk to our staff and we'll try to, we're, we're going to look at each project as it comes. We're going to go to the book and say, if detached accessory structure, it's part of the home. And there's two separate sections that deal with that.
Right.
But Paul, the detached accessory structure has a limitation on the size, right?
There'd be size too, it can't be large.
So much of the size of the house?
A hundred square feet?
Thousand square feet.
A thou-
Or not larger than the principal home.
Thousand square feet's bigger than my whole house?
That would not be allowed, ma'am.
Oh.
Okay, we've made this poor gentleman stand here for long enough.
So we're, we're not concerned about the width of this, the 14-foot width of this deck, correct? It's the 12 feet from the house into the backyard. And it sticks out three feet on one side and two feet on the other side. So he could-
And, and that could be even less than that because we went by the, we could not find the site pins because two of the site pins are actually in footings from the neighbors' fences. So to run a string line, we couldn't do that and the neighbors' fences bowed. So it might be as little as six inches on one corner based on how you measure it and down to about a foot and a half on the other corner. But the, the fence, you know, my neighbor who was unsolicited, I'm glad he showed up, I appreciate it. By the way, the fence is, uh, I don't think was ever permitted and a little bit wavy. So based on where you measure it, it, it would come damn close, pardon my French.
Yeah, you'd have to get a surveyor to find out for sure. So if your deck instead of 12 feet back, if it were 10 feet, then it would be okay. Is that correct? Nine, nine to 10, so it'd be 14, nine by 14, 10 by, nine and a half, 10 by 14 instead of 12 by 14. And that would be okay?
Without looking so long as the 25 feet was maintained, yes. However, that measures out.
If your choices were between a nine, 10-foot by 14-foot four-season room or zero four-season room, I'm not saying that's what, I'm not saying that's what we decide, but we try to look through as many different options as we can think of. And we do this almost at every meeting.
And I'll be honest with you, I'm just a spokesperson, she's the decision maker.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of looking at her face.
There's no illusion who's in charge whatsoever.
Do we have someone interested in making a motion one way or the other? Or we have more questions? That's a good alternative, Melissa.
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion to approve.
Our, our silence back here is because we get it, we do. But, um, by the time when you put a roof on it, we, you know, I, I will look at it the same way as I would if you were coming with an addition. And I, I can't see taking a deck off and putting on an addition into the setback. I can't see the hardship of it being mirrored, I, although I get it, I 100% get it. But if we were held to approve a variance every time a, a plan that happened 20 years ago was different than what it was supposed to be or whatever, uh, we'd have a lot of variances in town. But anyway, I, I want him and I here, I, I get what you're going for, unfortunately. I would make a motion to deny the request. I would make a motion to deny the request.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay, do we have other further discussion? Okay, we're gonna do a roll call, Paul, please.
Megan, we're here to count our tally.
So a, a yes is a deny, a no is a approve.
So we're gonna keep a tally. So Megan? Brooks?
Yes.
Rob? Alyssa? Mike?
Brian is recusing himself.
Right, I didn't hear that.
Okay. So your options are, you can bring it forth to city council, correct?
Correct, you do have multiple avenues of appeal there on roughly page one forty of the zoning code fifteen dash twenty dash five. If you would like to appeal their decision to the city council, we need a, a written statement from you. Doesn't have to be anything fancy, you can send me an email saying you want to appeal. We need that within five working days, but usually we'll give you till the Friday after, so sometime before next Friday. If you're interested, if you wanna shoot me an email saying why you feel their decision should be modified, reversed, or vacated, then we can get you scheduled on a future city council meeting agenda. And there's always the avenue to appeal their decision to court.
And if he does choose to appeal, is there an additional fee?
There is not.
There is not. And if he does appeal to the city council, is he allowed to provide any new evidence that was not presented tonight?
No, no new testimony or evidence may be submitted to the city council in connection with the review. So it'd basically be a rehearing, you're, you'd be able to say roughly-
Restate my statement.
Yeah, you, you, you know, you're, we don't require you to read a transcript or anything, but try to stay on script with what you previously presented.
I'm glad I used a script. I thank you all very much for your time, your consideration and your thoughtful questions, I really do. I know you're all in a hard position in this and to uphold the standards of the city based on an old city inspector that let a lot of stuff go. But I know you guys are in a tough spot and I truly appreciate it, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, maybe rethink your measurements, maybe, or. I hope you get somehow what you want, but-
If you're that close, you might wanna pay for a survey. It might be worth, you know, I mean, if, if you think you might be within six inches or something like that, it might be worth getting a survey, you might have, you might have room, it might be worth it.
Okay. Yeah, I learned a lot today and I really appreciate it. And so everybody knows, I've been sitting about a hundred feet from Brian for the last three weeks and I haven't been able to say a word and I haven't. So it's been tough, but yeah, thank you very much.
Well, sorry, we, you know, we all feel for ya.
Yep, fully understand, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna reconvene planning and zoning and go back to discussion items. Municipal Code Reasonable Accommodations Ordinance, page twenty-seven.
So there's a lot of fun, old-looking text in there that's the, the text of the amendments sent back in nineteen eighty-eight. So I did do some looking, to me it looks like it relates solely to housing and not necessarily commercial buildings. But I wanted to include it in there for you all to read if you needed something fun to do some night. Or if you want this to remain on the agenda, I can always write up more of a summary. It's just a quick turnaround between a Thursday and then we need an agenda the next week. So if you want me to do more research into it, I certainly can, or however you would like to proceed with the items twelve and thirteen. We have a little bit of discussion on fourteen that's above and beyond just our reasonable accommodations proposal.
Does anybody have anything on twelve and thirteen that you wanna bring up?
Um, question about this. So this, this makes accommodations for individuals with disabilities. What, what happens if that disability goes away? What happens if the applicant moves? So I know the example, I don't know why I have such a bad echo. I know the example we used as if they had to put a handicapped man in the front yard in the setback. So what happens if they do that and then they move away? Is that accommodation allowed to stay with the property even though the handicapped individual is no longer there? Or the need no longer exists?
I have not researched that specifically. My hunch is, yes, we probably wouldn't make them go back and do it. Whether that is correct or not, I don't know. Probably something I would have to go and look at and come back next time. There are also some language changes I wanna put in there as well. So not only is it the Fair Housing Act amendments, but it's the Americans with Disabilities Act and all sorts of legal references we need to add. But I do not know the answer to your question specifically.
Yeah, that was, that was just one question. You know, because there are things that might, might be a year long or that, that would require us to, to make an exception. You know, other than that, you know, and I think as long as it's, is for private property and not apartments or, you know, when you, when you put the word developers in there, it kinda opens up something in my mind that it's, it's more than just individual, um, private houses, but and then I assume this, this is kinda like a variance that other reasonable options are looked at first. Is that kind of a judgment call on, I think we agreed staff would, would interpret this, that this would not come to us. I, I assume that all, all other reasonable options need to be pursued first, um, including just because it's cheaper or easier to get the variance rather than make it work within, within the ordinance?
I wanna say yes, but I don't for sure know and I, I will, I will do my best to research that and come back with more of a memo for our next meeting.
Okay, so that covers twelve and thirteen, excuse me, twelve and thirteen. Okay, moving on to fourteen.
So immediate, the immediate section fourteen in our agenda deals with the amended language of reasonable accommodations. Last time we had talked about, are there any other things you want to add? It has been a very busy couple of weeks of people finding out about that language and being annoyed. So we probably get one or two people come in to the office probably each week and while I've had my house for thirty years, now all of a sudden I have to, I wanna add some pavement on my property and now I have to replant. So we tell them yes because you don't meet any of the exceptions, so that's what you have to do. Then of course they get angry at us because it's gonna cost somewhere between a thousand dollars-ish and well, I just wanted to put some pavement, now I'm spending pavement plus a thousand dollars. So we just wanted to put that in front of you again in case there are any exceptions you want to make to that. And it's, it's easy to come up with ideas, but the practicality of it, is it an exception under a certain amount of money, then the problem runs into, well, there are property lines all over the place and then you still have to apply setbacks and whatnot. So we just wanted to put it out again for your consideration. A lot of this comes from the core area of town where you have the original lots are the lighter blue lines. And then, so the county has them as a parcel together, but each of them, this lot, for example, is three lots. So if they wanted to come in and basically do anything other than a fence, they would need to get a surveyor, go out and resubmit a plan, get it approved and then they could apply for what they wanna do. So we just wanted to put that again for your consideration. If you come up with anything, if not, we will continue to enforce the rules as is. So we just wanted to bring it for discussion.
So this building is in the old part of town, is-
This, this particular lot is the apartments just to the north.
Okay, but out of curiosity, what's the status of where we are right now?
City Hall, I believe, is one lot.
Is this building on more than one lot? Was it replanted? Oh, okay. Why wasn't I informed?
Are you within three hundred feet here?
I were, oh. I was, I hear? Oh, okay.
Kenny's house and everything?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, thank you.
So. Not making them replant it, but for future sale or if there's a problem with sales or actually in compliance then for setbacks and everything, if they got a bank survey, that stuff would be over lines and-
Yeah, it will be a inconvenience at, at this time, but it'd be better, much better to have it done before you sell it. Then if it starts messing up your sale and timelines with that, it could be a lot worse.
It's not fun to come up with that money, but I don't know what else you do to make it work correctly without, just because I, most of them are probably gonna be sitting on the line anyway if they put something there because they gotta meet other setbacks and-
When they come in, they get pretty spirited, so we just wanted to make sure that it is as you want it to be.
That's a nice way to put it, spirited. Sorry to do that to you folks, but I don't, I don't see any interest here in making any other changes at this point, okay? All right, moving on to fifteen then.
I guess the only thing I would say about that, Patrick, is if, if there are things that come up that make sense for us to consider, you could bring it to us, but, because you never know, but, um, yeah, I would say it'd be best to get them replanted.
Sounds good. And if you for some reason, Rob, Brian, and Mike are probably the ones most likely to run across it in the field if examples come up, maybe others as well, but if you come up with anything, we can certainly talk about it as well, just let me know and we'll get it on the agenda again.
And just one last question that popped in my head. So if, if that situation was to occur and the improvement they wanted to do would not create a non-conformity, currently would, would you say that's okay? I mean, if for some reason the lots-
Currently, we would still make them replant it.
Still make them replant it, even if it didn't.
Even if it doesn't expand or create a non-conformity, is that how you want it still? And that's where I get, some of them get a little frustrated because I'm just adding some pavement that's not gonna change anything. It's just a thousand dollars going out of the bank.
I'm not sure how you would capture it in a code, but in my mind, just if it doesn't create a setback issue, I guess.
Well, if they're doing anything to the lots that aren't containing the primary structure, then you have all kinds of, you know, if you, if you put a garden shed on the second lot, well, it doesn't have an accessory building or it's an accessory building without a primary structure and, you know, so you, it gets, it makes Paul's job a lot harder to figure out what's allowed on a vacant lot, you know. Well, and to me-
If it crosses the lines, then yeah, I would fully agree with that. I was just thinking if they were two lots and they wanted to add something to one, to the one that has whatever the primary use and it doesn't create a, ah, that's the one I have a problem with, but I don't know how to capture that. I think I'd be frustrated if that was the case too, but yeah, if anything.
I think a lot of the problem is though these are, if you wanna call them invisible lines to the homeowners that own the houses. And it's hard for Paul, I think, if they would add a little concrete, is, well, where's that line really at to make it? Because, you know, they'd have to draw a site plan and they go, well, here's the line. Well, is it there or is it over five feet? I, you know, I don't, without the surveying and stuff done on it.
So just for your-
You can't always stretch the pins.
Reference. The most recent one that came up was the one shown on the board. I don't know if I really want during a public meeting to call out this guy's stuff, but. So where you have the second lot is this. So he wanted to do some pavement work up front. So of course the problem is once you add exceptions to the general rule, you start adding a lot of exceptions to the general rule, so.
The thing I would say about that one is there's times when those little parts get missed when they sell it. Our, our neighbor, there was a easement pedestrian walkway between our properties and they vacated it and our neighbors owned it. And then when they sold it, that vacated part didn't get put in the title work. And so, I mean, that, that stuff happens, so if you don't put it in there, sooner than later, it's gonna cause a problem, even on something like that, but I understand what you're going through.
Okay, are we moving on to fifteen then? Yeah, okay.
So last time and a few meetings before, I mentioned that we're gonna start just taking a broad look at the zoning code to make sure it's straightforward. Interpretations are relatively clear, things are defined, it does what we want it to do. Generally, we wanna be consistent, fair, predictable. We want the zoning code to be understood by people that never picked up the code before. Generally, you can read it and hopefully understand. So I just highlighted, we, we start, at a basic level, start with the definitions of what a lot is, where our various lines are drawn, property lines, yard lines, building lines, all that kinda stuff. I tried to include very professional-looking drawings in there of my interpretation of what it says. Hopefully yours isn't different, if so, then we should probably correct it, just so we're all on the same page. But I, it's great when lots are square and rectangle in the house. It's square and rectangle, very easy, very few houses are actually built that way anymore. So I just wanted your thoughts on a couple of our definitions, are there ways to make them clear? Are they being applied correctly? What would you prefer, that kinda thing? So starting off with the definition of lot, right, that's the red. Right now our lot is defined by what it contains rather than how it's legally defined. So the blue definition is taken from the city of Sioux Falls. I just wanted your feedback on whether you're good with what we have or if you like more of the second, if you would like something else. It's hard to define a lot, it's one of those things, we all know what it is, you know, because that's the way the zoning regulates everything, but does it make sense? Are you good with it, that kinda thing? And the same is kinda true with all the commentary going forward. The big one I wanted to discuss with is the front yard definition. There are a lot of staff interpretations that are conflicting, which tells me that there's not a consistent interpretation. Maybe you all would surprisingly be all on the same page, so we'd have six to seven opinions that are exactly the same, it's so great. We're just curious about what it is, so that's what we can enforce. So I am just open to any thoughts you have on stuff on pages fifty-one to fifty-eight. And I included a, a simpler lot for the front yard definitions versus- And I included a, a simpler lot for the front yard definitions versus a more complicated lot, we're seeing Z lots are where things get complicated. Unfortunately, we have definitions that apply to both the simple and the complex, what can we do to not make things more difficult than it has to be? What, if, is there a definition that can be universally applicable and do what you want it to do? If so, then that is obviously staff's preference. Whatever we can do to help you.
Once you get, so like on the Z thing there, once you get past the front yard setback, does it matter what you call it?
It does in certain places where we say you can, you can't have certain things in the front yard, or you can't have certain things in the side yard or the rear yard, so there is, they're probably more limited than, most things are probably, you can't have it in a setback, but there are certain things you can't have in the front yard. Broadly, that would include the setback and anything else, however you want to define where that line is measured. So I, I put three examples in there, how you could potentially interpret where the front yard of the building starts. Whether it's the nearest point of the front wall of the building, which the first one looks all right, you have a little bit of space between the front yard line and the building, but then when you get to a Z lot, it gets a little more complicated, then the second one is a definite, is a definition I found from another city where they take the front yard setback similar to the first example, and then if it's physically in front of the house, it, it drapes down in alignment with those front contours. And the third one is it ebb and flows with the front of the house. And just, if it's in front of the house, it's a front yard, if it's on the side of the house, it's a side yard, if it's behind the house, it's a rear yard. So, I don't know how you all want it interpreted, but that's why we're here, just to, the front yard is the complicated one, because then that determines what's a rear yard and what's a side yard. We just want to make sure that we're consistent, predictable, straightforward.
At first glance, I like the third one best because then the front door of the house is part of the front yard, which our ordinance says that the front yard is the place where the address of the house is, that where the front door of the house is.
Conceptually for, for everyone, I'm, I haven't pulled, I could pull them up on GIS and maybe try to figure out where it is, but I think the front yard is, you have the garage and then I think the front yard is somewhere in here. Or the, the front door, but I, I'm not for sure, I'd have to remember where I found those and then they were somewhere in town, so we do have Z lots.
Yeah, and I say it at first glance, but I'd have to listen to discussion and stuff before I can make up my mind for sure.
We're getting bigger, it's hard to pace over there. There are not out in Chestnut Ridge, they were, they were somewhere.
Aren't there some in the bluffs?
Maybe that's where I found them. I know there are a ton in Sioux Falls over by Harmonon Park, maybe we'll just cursor over there. These guys over here. Where do we think the front door is? That's kind of hard to tell, it looks like old drive.
It's probably right underneath, like where it says Sioux Falls, right where your cursor's at, because you go in the garage there and then there's just a little covered porch, and then you go in the.
What's north on that picture? Up. Okay. Because that's, I have a friend who lives in, I think the neighborhood you're showing there. Right, right next to, yeah, right across from Harmonon Park, basically.
So I guess the broad question is, what on something like a Z lot would you consider to be the front yard, where would we mark it on? Unfortunately, you know, with definitions, we have to find a definition that meets both the complex and the simple, and that's where it becomes hard.
Patrick, I guess, in, in my mind, so I'm looking in our packet on page fifty-three. A couple things that concern me is that, for example, that top right diagram, that sketch, the rear yard is oriented based on the building shape, but not on the property, and I don't think that should be correct. I think, I think the rear yard, I think the front yard and the rear yard should be parallel to the front property line and the rear property line. If that makes sense.
So it would.
So it would be.
Do you find the point and then you draw it over?
Yeah, so for example, that, yeah, that top, that top right diagram, to me, maybe it's easiest if I just point. In my mind, this would be the rear yard.
Yep, I see what, yep.
Yeah. It would be the same thing here, around here, and then, you know, does it go up here and that? I, in my mind, if, if this is less than forty-five degrees,
Yep.
that becomes part of the front yard, if this is greater than forty-five, then that would be the side. Does that, does that kind of make sense? You know, how, how far is a building out of, out of alignment before, well, does this face the front or does this face the side?
Then the tricky thing is how do we write it? Yep. Your microphone, just in case I go back later and wanna.
In, in my mind, is that it's, it's parallel with the front, the front property line, the rear property line, the side property line, and not with the building. Because that's, that's how your setbacks are established. Whatever, whatever the shape of that property line is, you, you basically just offset that line, and that establishes your setbacks. I don't, I think all municipalities do that the same way. Um, and so I think we should treat our, our yard definition the same way that we treat our setbacks. I think the other question is, you know, if the, the shape of the building undulates, that it includes all of the undulations, I thought there was a sketch in here. Yeah, on the top of, top left of page fifty-four, you know, that, that little notch, to me, that's all part of the, of, of the front yard. I know a month or two, there was a situation where, well, is that or the side yard is that, the front yard?
And that was on a, an attached, like, townhouse.
Yep, where.
But it's similar, I don't know how, if you look at that the same then, if it's, you know, if it's attached or detached, is it the same? Is it still fire, but yeah. So yeah, I think, I, I can agree with Brian, it would be, if you look at the the corner of the home and then go parallel with the street or the front setback or the rear setback, whatever, um, just go parallel to the corner of the home.
And the Z lots, then, would we do the corner of the home furthest from? So would we measure up here rather than the closest point? So it would be, would be plain up here with the, or would we be going here?
No, I think, I think we would go up, because the, like, on the right side there, if you go down, you'd be, that's the driveway, so you don't want the driveway and the side, side yard, right? So that's the driveway, so you'd have to go up to the top, so you, yep, you go there and then go straight across for the side yard.
So we'd go the, the highest knot, or the notch point furthest from the front yard line would be the front yard. Which, that, you know, sounds easy in practice, then someone's gonna throw a circle at us or something.
Well, and if it was a, you know, I could see a house that had, you know, a front door and then there was something that was off to the side. And I can see how you could question whether that off to the side would be front yard or side yard, but, um, there's always gonna be something that's gray.
So are the set, the setbacks are five foot though, correct, on the side yards, on these, if they were R two?
Correct.
Because of most of them, I think are zero setback on one side, a Z lot in Sioux Falls, and that's where most of these are coming from, the builders. One side's a zero setback, and I think the other side's ten feet is what they do. The side yard would be ten feet on the one side and the other side is zero. Once he showed, I think are zero on one side.
I don't think I.
So you're saying they, they built.
Oh, that's what that looks like. Why did they do that? Yeah, but why wouldn't you go five, I don't.
Might come up as an issue once that starts getting developed, is what I'm saying. I'm assuming there's no openings on that, on that wall that's on the property line? Because I don't, I don't think you can have a window on the property line. I'm not real up to speed on the residential code, but yeah.
Maybe they think it just makes it easier so that one property owns ten feet and one side and zero on the other, instead of having five feet and five feet or something, that, I don't know that I agree with that, but that's.
I, I think the intent is, there, there's still ten feet of property between, between the buildings, it's just that you get to control an entire ten-foot section and not a five-foot section and a five-foot section. So I can kind of understand where it's coming from and what the intent is, it's, it's definitely different, but it, it makes sense.
Maybe if you were mowing your home, but a lot of these places have associations where they, the people who live in the house, otherwise your mower's three feet wide, you gotta mow a five-feet spot, you know.
I just want to make it aware.
Got to make sure that you let the, the developers know so that they're totally aware.
That it might, I want to say throw a wrench into their idea of how they're doing it. Are, are you seeing a lot of that going up in Sioux Falls on the, on the Z houses?
I, you know, there's no deal with them, but I just, there's a lot of Z lots in Sioux Falls, I know.
Yeah, there is.
And I don't know if it will become a thing here, I mean, I know, like I said, Chestnut Ridge, it will have them. I don't know if anyone else will start throwing them in or not. We haven't seen it in Van Buiskers, that, you know, development, obviously we've seen that, so hard to know, I guess.
I mean, they, they, they make sense, I mean, the, the density doesn't get any better or worse. But I think we may need to start, if, if that's something we want to consider doing, we may need to start to address that sooner rather than later, so that, so that we're set when a developer wants to come in and do something like that.
And then they're gonna want a variance.
So are we saying that we should put that on Patrick's to-do list? Start looking at that?
Add to it.
I know Baltic, their development had Z lots, one of their, I don't know how they set it up though, for, that's one, I don't know. I don't know where any other communities that have Z lots for, I don't know if like Remilian does or if Brookings does, I don't know. It's hard. Yeah, I guess I'd be interested to see, you know, what some of these other communities, what their ordinance says, and what their limitations are.
Can I bug you for your microphone?
You are looking at, you're in, to me, it's yard to yard, it's like barracks almost, so, but if that's how people want to live, then that's what will probably become it, so.
Good point, okay, so it's, yeah, add to your to-do list.
So what I'm hearing for a front yard definition is more in the something else category, more of a, a line parallel to the front property line that extends the width of the property at the furthest point of the front wall of the structure.
Actually be farthest, but.
Yep. Okay, so.
Does that, does that mock up the setbacks though then? So the, i- if the, if the front yard starts at the, at the farthest back points of the house, then does the, that that corner that's closer to the road, does that stick into the setback that way then, or?
The setback line would be measured independently of what is the front yard. So we would still have the, the setback would be measured, but you could conceptually have yard between the setback line and the front of the building.
So it'd still be all right? Yeah, if it were measured correctly, yeah.
On that example.
Yeah.
The furthest left point of the house would go to the, or that, that down, uh, left side of the house.
Our left side.
The right side diagram, sorry.
Yeah.
Right side diagram.
Yeah, the Z lot.
Z lot one, other, other diagram, Patrick, or who's ever.
Yep.
So that, that does bring up a question then, if we do it here, does that then make this the front yard line? If it's the furthest point? Not that it to some degree makes a difference with the side yard.
But even like that Z lot, the left side of that house, would that be pulled, that line would be pulled to the front further, towards the driveway, I would say, follow that angle down for the setback? Or would you come left to that side for your twenty-five foot?
I assume the, the setback would run parallel.
Parallel with it?
Good. Then what becomes the yard beyond that potentially gets a little funky, because if you follow the line, then you'd have this portion of the side that's in the front still. Or what people would consider their front. Or the side, what people would consider their side would be in the front.
Yeah, the other thing is, there's, there's still a setback in the side that goes all the way to the front edge of the property and all the way to the rear of the property. Does that make sense?
Yeah, there's still a five foot there.
Yeah.
On the side, side.
So there's, there's still a five-foot setback in the side yard.
Yeah, all the way.
Yeah, all the way.
There's a, and then there's a, a front yard setback that goes around here and another.
Yeah, follows it.
Yeah, so you need, at these corners, you need to comply with both.
Yep, and and that is shown later on in here, kind of where we've mapped that out, you have the rear, the full width, then you have the. That's, that's the definition of side yard, which maybe we need to fix, maybe not, but then the side yard actual setback definition is that way.
But for, for this, it's more what you can do in the front yard, side yard, rear yard, and what you can't do. Cause there's things other, other than setbacks, there's other things that you can and can't do.
I will work on a fourth definition and we will include that in our definitions discussion next time. And hopefully we're moving in the right direction on how we want front yards to find.
We, we kinda skipped over some of the other ones. I, I like the lot description that you have in blue. I think the next category, the property line versus lot line. I would, I guess I'd rather see just property line and get rid of lot line.
If, and I thought about that and then I thought, then whenever you talk about a lot, you should say property instead of lot. Cause if you say property line instead of lot line, but then yet call it a lot. You know, you should call it a property and a property line, or a lot and a lot line. Either, you know, one or the other.
And then the next, the next three, building line, setback, setback line and yard line. I think setback is probably more of a common term. So. You know, you, you said some of those, those three there are. I guess I would prefer to maybe just consolidate it now into that setback and setback line. Just my comments on that.
Our big kind of, what we like to do here, we have these academic discussions, so that's the, the fun.